Okay, we're live. We will start with the publications, please. Publications. Okay. Does anybody have a chance to sign in? Who's going to speak today or later on in the agenda? If you haven't, you're welcome to come up and sign up if you're with an entity that wants to discuss your budget request for 2026. First off, we are going to start with approval of the agenda. I did ask Chris to switch some things around if you guys are okay with it. We're going to do our additional appropriations in the beginning in our regular meeting and then we'll adjourn our regular meeting and then open the public hearing and let the private entities do their budget requests and then we can go into the first reading of the budget if everybody's okay with that.
Sounds pretty neat.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brad, second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. First up is additional appropriations for solid waste revenue. So it's not really an additional request. It's just monies that were not budgeted because it's a revenue from ticket sales and recycling. They want to be able to spend that for the rest of the year for the remainder of their expenses. So I think it's $95,800. Correct? Anything else we need to say about that or we just need to approve it? Nope, because we already expended all of the town. Okay. So do you might have any questions about that or they're looking, like I said, for the request of $95,800 if their revenue to use that? And then I guess whatever is not used, we'll just go back into the plan.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Additional appropriations. I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Cory, but I think David beat you.
I think David.
Okay. Second by David. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Do you want to go ahead and put this next one?
The next one is for the general fund out of the commissioners, or no, sorry, capital projects fund for the commissioners. This is for the paving of the county parking lot, so it would be out of Fund 4,800 for $98,600.
That's the, yeah, capital projects fund, so. That's the one that I asked Greg last night. Oh, it is. Do you might have any questions about that one or want to discuss it further?
That's for the whole, all the way around?
I believe so. Do you want to draw anything for that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion. Motion to approve made by Paul, second by Stan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passes six to zero.
The next one is for the general fund out of the commissioners' budget for publications. We typically have a budget of $3,000 annually for publication. The Animal Welfare Board did an update of the organs which had to be published twice, which was super expensive. The, it was actually $1,300 per run. The Animal Welfare paid one advertisement of that, so we had to pay the other $1,300. So that pretty much wiped us out. We needed like $562 to pay the rest of that. So I'm doing $1,000 to where that will give us a little under $500 to get us through the remainder of the year, which is where we would have been before that publication.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve made by David.
Second.
Second by Cory. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passes six to zero.
And just a little bit more information on that, just so you understand, the general fund, if we don't spend all of that remaining, the cash just stays in there. It's instant, zeros back out at the beginning of 2026. The next additional appropriation request is from the general fund for the election board out of insurance for $2,500. It is to pay the invoice that we've had since April for the legalities that we have with the election fees, if I correct.
Insurance deductible for attorney to represent Perry County in the lawsuit with Sherry Flynn versus Perry County.
Yep.
So, do you might have any questions on that? Chris Jones here, but she wasn't really here during that time, so. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Brad, second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion passes six to zero. Okay. I guess that's all the additional appropriations, so if there's nothing else for this meeting, we can entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and then we'll open up our public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Cory.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. And, okay. Now we will open up our public hearing. On September 3rd and September 10th, the Perry County Council met with department heads of the county to go over their 2026 budget requests. And then this evening's meeting, we are going to hear from outside agencies on your requests. And again, if you haven't signed up and you need to sign up, we have a sheet here and we'll just go in order if that's okay from how people signed up. And then after we get done hearing those, in addition, there'll be the first reading of the budget for 2026. So if that means that, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by David.
Second.
Second by Stan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your pass. Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Private entities speak on their 2026 budget, so let's see. Ms. Guthrie from Ride Solutions. Step right up.
I appreciate you guys. I'm Becky Guthrie, I'm the director of Ride Solution. I've been there since the start. So it's been 25 years since we've been in operation. We have been down here since 2010 and the county is Spencer and I think Warren was in 2008. But it enables any of the residents to travel around Southern Indiana, Ride Solution does, in the 10 counties that we serve. You know, we cross counties depending on what the situation is. Employment is big for what we do. A lot of people mistake us thinking it's a medical thing, but it's not. We are public transportation funded through NDOT and FTA, but we have to have match money and we have to have a contribution from the county for operation in every county that we serve. Unfortunately, the year before last, a miscommunication and an email that I had sent in requesting went to somebody that didn't work here any longer and it was my mistake and we did not get funded for that year. So we notified, we went ahead and operated for the whole year with no contribution from Perry County because we had people, there were steady riders that needed us. I sent out letters at the beginning of the last year telling them that we were going to have to cease funding since you guys decided not to fund us for this year, 2025. After I sent out the letters, there was kind of a, really, community members and community places really started calling me asking, what do we have to do to get this back? I'd already notified NDOT that we would not, we would be dropping Perry County and I said, let me contact NDOT, find out. And he said, since they didn't fund you last year, you need to be resourceful with the community. And Wapaka, is that how I pronounce it? Wapaka stepped up and funded for the year that we got nothing. And then the mayor of Tell City contacted me and said that, you know, he personally knew several people that used the service and to go to work and stuff and he did not want to see this go away. So the city voted to fund us for this year, which they did. But they said this was a one-time thing because it's a county, a county transportation service, it's not a city, Tell City, transportation service. So I'm here to ask the county, please, to put us back in your appropriations, to keep public transportation here in the county. It has far-reaching effects. It's not just a taxi for a few people. A lot of people coming into the county look for public transportation and there's a lot of grant opportunities that you probably don't realize that go through different venues. And one of the checklists is, do you have public transportation? I've sent multiple letters to different people that want to maybe come to different counties to set up business or just a grant doing housing, you know, affordable housing for, that's another thing that they always want to know if you have public transportation because a lot of people have public assisted housing, do not have reliable public transportation. So that's why I'm here, to ask you to please to put us back in your allocation for 2026 and we will do the best we can to take care of your county.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How much are your rides or is it based on how many miles you go or one-way or?
No. A lot of taxi cabs, it's $2 each way. $1 for every additional stop that's made. Like sometimes we pick somebody up from someplace and they say, like if we drop them off at a doctor's office and they come out, see, I need to get a prescription bill, can you stop by the pharmacy or something? That's a dollar additional if they stop, if we have time to stop. But there's, if you cross Hugo County to County, it's $6. We have a lot, some people that come in from Spencer County because you have a lot more than Spencer County has, as far as they don't even have a Walmart there. So I mean, there's, there's different reasons why people come and go throughout the area.
It's not income-based? I mean, you said that individuals, I believe, I listened to the Tell City meeting and someone said, I'm not sure who it was, but I remember hearing the conversation that a lot of people who work at Wapaka use this service?
He has had different, a lot of people start out using it, but then, once they get a steady job, and that's with any place, once they get a job, they can get their car fixed or they're able to get a vehicle or else they find somebody to ride with. But it's, it's a way to get employees in the door a lot of times. And that's what we see in all of the counties that we serve. They can't afford to miss work and they have no way to get there. And this is something that's, can be used for a temporary situation. And it seems like, and some employers actually just pay for, they'll bypasses or tickets where they pay for employees to get there until they can get on their feet. So there's, there's all different ways to fund it. And we have, sometimes we have just different people in town that ask if, you know, what they can do to help some of the people with transportation because it's a big concern in a lot of areas.
It's not income-based, you said?
No, income-based.
I guess my, my only issue is that we have a cab company in this community that pays taxes. And so I feel like if we're subsidizing a public transportation for people to get back and forth to work or Walmart or wherever, I feel kind of bad for the company, you know, the business that's trying to make it and we're not subsidizing them, so that's.
He is also a Medicaid provider. A Medicaid provider as another source of government income. We are not a Medicaid provider. We're strictly public transportation only.
I was just thinking of, we, we don't give a subsidy to him as a small business, but we're using his taxes to fund another competing business is what, I guess, my issue.
I, I don't feel that way at all because I don't know what his hours are too. We're just Monday through Friday. But I know that if you do Medicaid trips, there is subsidy that comes in from the government, which I know he isn't. Last I knew, he wasn't a Medicaid provider, so.
So do you guys get help through that also, like Medicaid if you don't have? It's just strictly the state and federal fund?
Yeah. No, we do not get any Medicaid funding at all.
Okay. Does he might have any questions for Ms. Guthrie?
Okay. Thank you.
If not, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Safe travels on your drive back. Okay. Next step. Robert Faust?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Animal Control. And I think it's for the board, right?
Yeah. I'm here to ask for the continued $5,000 of the board gets per year. I think Charlie had sent them the document requesting.
I'm sorry, what did you say? You said for $25,000?
Oh, $5,000, no.
Oh, for $5,000?
$25,000, but no, no, $5,000.
Well, I thought, I thought it was $25,000.
Is that?
So your total request is $30,000.
Does he have the document for the year?
You're welcome to, you're welcome to see that. That's what was sent in. So it was the, I guess it was the regular $5,000 that you get and then an additional $25,000? So you want $30,000?
No, $20, $25,000. I didn't know that he had included.
We have $30,000. We have $30,000. $30,000, because it was $25,000 for the animal control officer, then the $5,000 was normally for stuff. So we put $5,000, that's the way I read it, or $30,000, that's what I read.
Okay. Does that sound right? This 30, sound right?
It says here that we're requesting $25,000. I think the animal control officer, we're requesting $20,000 for that.
Okay. Do you want to talk on that or?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about the $5,000? What do you plan to do with that or what you guys?
So the $5,000, I'm kind of, kind of new to the animal work, but from what it sounds like, we get that every year and that is for, to help with euthanization, spay and neuter, things like that in the community. The $5,000 would go to.
I didn't, I just didn't know if you guys had any plans for it, you know, already talked about or anything or?
Not specific. That's like, we're waiting for the full board to sit, which now, since the new, the new ordinance has been passed, you will, as soon as you're publicly asking for another board member, which you will, you will pick, then we'll have a full complement of seven members. Then we can sit down and exactly see how we're, we're going to do that.
Okay. And then the $20,000 is for animal control?
The animal control officer, I need to speak more on that.
Okay.
Okay. So our county is currently receives an average of two animal-related calls per day. After reviewing the cats, that's about what it points to, two animal, two animal calls per day. These calls include reports of stray dogs, complaints about cats, with some residents simply asking what can be done to, done about the persistent stray cat issues. These calls are at times being diverted to the local animal shelter during my first animal board meeting. Molly from the shelter had explained that some of these calls were coming from, directly from dispatch to come pick up some of these animals. This is not only unfair burden for the shelter, but it's also outside of the legal scope of their duties as defined by county ordinance. The absence of an animal control officer is putting both the community and the shelter at risk. In just the past few weeks, we have seen escalating incidents. There was a cyclist that was attacked by several dogs and in the same week, there was a child that was nearly attacked by a dog. I believe it's only a matter of time before a more serious injury occurs. Stray cats are another growing issue. In Perry County, cats are roaming in large numbers. Many are showing obvious welfare problems beyond the visible neglect. These animals can spread serious diseases. One major concern of mine is a parasite known as Taxoplasma gondii. And for you, for those of you who do not know, that is a parasite that affects the brain. Studies have shown that between 14% to 100% of outdoor cats in the United States are infected. Cats that eat raw meat such as mice are the ones that are primarily going to be infected with this disease. Historically, taxoplasmosis was first thought to cause rare but severe outcomes such as blindness or miscarriages in pregnant women. Now, that was rare. However, more recent research shows that alarming correlations with mental and neurological disorders. Up to 57% of its individuals with schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, OCD, or addiction issues have also tested positive for taxoplasmosis. Another study in 2023 found that 81% of individuals with schizophrenia were also infected with this great parasite. This disease spreads through cat feces, so I believe that the biggest demographic would be children. If a cat were to defecate in a playground, it would, a child could come by and that could get into their mouth, playgrounds, sandboxes, yards. And again, I believe the children would be the most vulnerable demographic facing the highest risk. Funding for an animal control officer is simply not a matter of animal management, is a matter of public safety, public health, and legal compliance. By creating this position, the county will ensure all calls are handled by trained and authorized professionals and not shelter staff who are overburdened. Reduce liability for the county by addressing threats to residents before a tragedy occurs. Protect community health by reducing the spread of parasites and zoonotic diseases such as that taxoplasmosis. And provide humane manage, management of stray and neglected animals. I believe without action, the county can see higher costs such as lawsuits or strain from already stretched community resources and the shelter. The need for an animal control officer is clear, urgent, and unforeditable.
And this would be part-time, you said?
Yes.
So what, what are the hours or like, what?
So part-time, 20 hours a week.
Like on-call? Like whenever they would get a call or?
Yes, I believe so. And we're, we're having to go through the Perry County Sheriff's Department, so it would be attached to that branch.
Have you talked to the sheriff about it?
I don't know if Charlie has, but I believe that makes the most sense because right now it would be the police officers who are responding to the calls, but they don't seem to want to go to the animal calls specifically. So I believe that having an animal control officer attached to the Perry County Sheriff's Office would probably be the best outcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Faust? Do you have anything else that you'd like to share?
Do we know if this person would still have to go through the academy if they're working under?
So one of the things for training, there is a free academy and that's through the BOAH, something that the state provides, a free open course. See what you want us to do, animal-related investigations.
It sounds like we'd have to also be a group. We're fine with.
I believe Charlie, one of his suggestions was a, a vehicle that the sheriff department had. I believe that he thought it was, a vehicle that could be available for that.
Not sure.
Yeah.
We'd have to, that's probably a conversation we need to have with him just to see, or the new sheriff, whoever's coming in, you know, to see what that would look like. But, does anybody else have any questions?
Would the control officer, animal control officer have policing powers with regard to stray animals or the animal complaints?
Policing powers in terms of, he would, he would be able to take animals away.
So if somebody complained about an animal they thought was dangerous, he would?
He would come and take that animal, yes. I believe, again, I don't know, Molly, how often you're getting called out to those or if you still are or, yeah, yeah. So right now it's kind of a, a big burden that the shelter is taking on and they shouldn't be taking that burden. That shouldn't, that shouldn't fall under.
Does he might have anything else? I think you've provided us a lot of information to look over, so appreciate it.
I do have one question. It looks like if you map it out, that person would make $19 an hour. You could even be able to find somebody with those responsibilities part-time for that hourly rate?
I believe so, yes.
Just checking.
I have a, a full job requirements listed out here. Want me to provide those right now?
Oh, you sent?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the document.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I printed it, so. Yeah, no problem. Unless anybody has any questions? If not, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Can I have that back? I mean, I can bring it along. Okay. Who's next? Right, no problem. Who? Jesse, Council on Aging. Step right up.
I'll have to keep these together so we can have them at the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Callan? All right. My name's Jesse Watkins. I'm the executive director of the Perry County Council on Aging. Going on my six years of serving and six years of coming here and sharing with you all the wonderful things that we're doing, the challenges we face, the victories we've won. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for your continued support and the opportunity for us to come here and to share with you just a little bit about our organization. Over 50 years of service to the community, one of the biggest things that we've done over the course of that time is non-emergent medical transportation. So to help you understand that, that is dialysis, life-sustaining treatment, chemo, radiation, regularly scheduled doctor's appointments, outpatient therapies, rehabs, those sorts of things. We're supporting people in their homes to help them live independently by providing this form of transportation that is often subsidized through Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements. Of course, those are ever-changing. Cory, I'm sure can relate to. They seem to be getting less and less as years go on. But in addition to all of the medical transportation that we're doing, not only does it provide that opportunity to help people remain independent and living in their homes for the most part, we do provide a lot of support to Oakwood Health Campus and Golden Living Center, Brickyard Healthcare. Sorry, it's changed a couple of times since I've been with the organization.
You're a cert, certified Medicare provider then?
Yes, yes.
And Medicaid?
Medicaid.
Medicaid, not Medicare.
Medicaid. And, and we do, we do have a contract for a Medicare broker as well. So we are providing a lot of transportation, but not just on the medical side. Becky was sharing just a few minutes ago with Ride Solutions about trips to work and other things. We have always provided that service to people within our community. The difference is, we just haven't charged them for it. We've, you know, we've always left it open that if you can make a donation and you're able to, we would gladly accept it. If you cannot make a donation for that service, that's okay. We helped you now, maybe one day you can help somebody else. Even in our medical side of transportation, we don't deny somebody access to care just because they can't pay. If they fall in that guideline of, we're not going to get a Medicaid reimbursement or a Medicare reimbursement for that particular client, they're still receiving the service. They're still getting to their therapies, to their treatments, wherever they need to go. If they have a donation, that's great. If they don't have a donation, they're still getting there. We are not a taxi cab service. We do not operate really on the same level as they do. Our community benefits from a taxi cab service. I'll be the first one to tell you. They operate a little bit different hours than we do typically. We're Monday through Friday. We start between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning and we try to have everybody back in by 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening. Sometimes things happen. Traffic happens, appointments last longer than what we anticipate them to, or a little earlier or a little later. It's all in a day's work. We do operate on weekends for such services like dialysis that for some reason their service is interrupted throughout the week and, and they need to reschedule all of our clients for the weekend, they call us and, okay, this is what we're going to do. We're going to help you. It's the same schedule, it's just moved to Saturday or Sunday. Thanksgiving every year, it throws off the whole week. We're running dialysis on Sunday, so nobody's missing a treatment because we don't have the transportation. That's something that sets our agency aside from other organizations and agencies such as Ride Solutions and even Lincoln Go because we have, I don't want to say we have the monopoly, but we have the commitment to the folks here in this county to get them to those treatments that they need. We work directly with Navida, we're part of their emergency plan. We're the same with the nursing homes. Every year we fill out new forms. We're part of their master plan every year. We can't survive without you and then they can't survive without us. So we work hand in hand with that. So once we're talking about transportation, just last year, our total number of trips was 4,269 trips. Those are all measured in one-way legs and our total client base last year in the transportation program, Cam and Rod, was 233 clients. Year-to-date, we're serving 207 clients as of July the 31st and we've already done 2,550 trips just this year. The fall is always much busier. Insurance will change in January. Everybody wants to get in, get their end-of-the-year appointments. Things they start at the beginning of the year, let's get them wrapped up by the end of the year. The number will be a little bit smaller than last year. Two things affect that, mostly how insurance has changed and how Medicaid has shifted its directions. And then we've got a recall on a vehicle that. And then we've got a recall on a vehicle that we use massively. So processors issued a large recall, and it could be months, it could be weeks, it could be years before that vehicle is back in service. And we're not the only one affected. You know, LinkinGo was affected by it, Ride Solutions. Becky and I were having a conversation this evening before the meeting started, so we're all affected by it.
How many vehicles do you keep?
We have a fleet of eight vehicles and a staff of 15 drivers, two program assistants, director related to transportation, and then myself as the executive director. And we are hiring if anybody else wants a job. So in addition to our transportation program, we are one of the oldest providers of NEMT services in the state of Indiana. We just completed our federal review last year, and we came through that with a very exemplary score. We were very satisfied with the program that we're able to provide in Perry County. So our senior center, if you have not had the chance to come and see where your money's going, I'd like to invite you. We put out a monthly calendar. It's available on our website at perrycountycoa.org. It's available on our Facebook page. Stop by the center, 645 Main Street, walk in, grab a calendar off the desk. They're just inside the front door. They're always out, you know, two to three weeks before the next month begins, and it's packed. So in 2024, we opened our doors to 2,576 visits into the center. And then just within the first six months of this year, we've already experienced 2,635 visits. That is a lot of people in Tell City, Indiana, from all over Perry County and surrounding areas coming because we are pioneering the way for some of the things that senior centers are doing. You go to some senior centers and they look like nursing homes, just to be honest, assisted living facilities. It's wheelchairs, walkers, canes, crutches, whatever. And by all means, that's wonderful, and we're fortunate to have those in each community throughout the state of Indiana. There are very few communities that don't have a senior center. But we are so fortunate because our folks, while we have a minimal amount of that, these are folks that are active, these are folks that are looking for some way to get out of their home, they are rekindling friendships, they're reuniting with schoolmates, all of those things that are very important in fighting the epidemic of loneliness. We share that information quite often, and we refer to it quite often. In addition to just fun and exciting activities, themed parties, your standard run-of-the-mill Bingo, every old person loves Bingo. And out of my job, that is the thing I hate the most. Stan, if I could do anything other than call Bingo, it would be wonderful. I mean, I don't know what it is, but I hate it. I don't mind playing it, I just don't want to call it. It stresses me out because they're really serious about it. I'm like, listen.
Get ready, don't you have one coming up?
Well, yeah, but I, I take out the trash that night. I was stuck not long ago, and I had to call Bingo, and I'm like, I'm going to dial right here. Then in the back of the room, some mean old lady, I was like, shake those balls! She come out, and I just nearly fainted in front of all of everybody. I didn't know whether to be excited or embarrassed. And so, it was high 24. So that was the number that came up. Thank God. So we're bringing in, we're working with a group of community health partners and community businesses, Clarity Audiology, Oakwood Health Campus, Brickyard Health Center, Perry County Memorial is a heavy hitter at our center, the Ring of the Renewed Horizons Program, the Home Health, all of those folks are coming out to support us by calling Bingo, by being speakers at a monthly senior social on a different topic. Everybody's fun and fitness, new directions, hearing works. I could just stand here and list, list, list all of these folks that are coming in. Airevac is a great one that comes in every year and really does a membership drive for their program at the center.
Health Department, I think they come.
The Health Department, yes, they certainly do. So we're not just providing fun and recreation, which is all a great thing, and we need that. It's an important part of the aging process. It's a healthy part of it, but we're providing those educational components, those opportunities for them to connect names and faces and programs and build rapport with the people in our community that are providing those services that each one of us may need. If we don't need them now, we may need it soon. So our seniors are really supporting that. We're offering education, not just education, but exercise programs. We just launched the Drums Alive. You know, you put music of a certain generation to a big ball with some drumsticks, and today they had scarves on them, and I don't know what really went happened. It looked kind of weird to me, but they had the time of their lives, and they were moving, and they were laughing, and it was a good thing. We host an annual Health and Resource Fair every year. We usually have 30 to 50 vendors, depending on the year, and the services available within our community. It's a great day of networking for professionals within the community, but it's a great way. I know I see David there every year. You come down for the health fair like we have at Shergen Center and even down on Main Street. Folks really get a lot of good information that day. Volunteers make the community go around. It's backbones of any healthy community, and especially ours. Not only in our senior center do we have many senior individuals that are volunteering, whether to call Bingo or help prepare nutritious meals or maybe even drive on a senior center outing, you know, such as Life Enrichment, the band that the ARP Committee helped us fund a couple of years ago. It actually went today to the Derby Dinner Playhouse with a group of 24 people. So we're providing lots of opportunities for life enrichment. We can't do what we do without the generosity of this community. We don't just come here and ask you for money and expect you to pay the bills. The money that you give us, we stretch it as far as we can. My grandmother said she could squeeze a nickel until a buffalo pooped. And we're just not far from it, I'm telling you. I think it's got tears in its eyes, and it's getting pretty uncomfortable. We do a lot of fundraising. We do a lot of grant writing. We're not afraid to reach out and talk to people about our mission, our vision, the things, where we were and where we came from. When we moved to Tell City some years ago, we had about 35 people or so attending events at Cannleton after the center had been closed for the duration of COVID. And we've come to Tell City, and even from last year to this year, we have a membership of nearly 900 individuals coming to the senior center. That's epic. Gibson County doesn't have that. Spencer County doesn't even have a senior center. Hancock County, Lana's so jealous that she could cry some days. We had this conversation. We work with the others. We try to support one another in various ways, but what we have is a goldmine for this county in terms of not money, but in the experiences that we are able to provide and to offer. So we are certainly appreciative of your support. We hope that we can count on that again in next year's budget. We understand, of all people, how budgets are and how tight things can be, but we feel like we provide a very important service on many different levels in this community. I have shared with you some letters that were shared with me about how people feel and their appreciation for the Council on Aging, the senior center, and the services we provide. And with those individuals' permission, I've shared those. Do you have any questions that I can answer? I've taken up a lot of time.
I appreciate all the information that you provided. I do have just one thing that someone asked me one time, and I thought I answered it appropriately, but they said, you know, we see a lot of these bus trips, and they were under the understanding that somebody else was paying for this. And I said, no, the individuals have to pay for it themselves. It's not like the county's subsidizing or wherever else is subsidizing this. That's something that you get a group rate or something, and then you take.
That's exactly right. We work with them. It's passive fundraising. We make a small amount off of each one of those trips. So, you know, sometimes you ask somebody for $50, and they're going to look at you like you've got two heads. But you say, hey, let's go to Mackinac Island. They'll pay you $900 to go to Mackinac Island, but you've marked it up by $50 or $40 or whatever. And so it's passive fundraising.
So it just helps you subsidize your corporation?
Yep, absolutely.
That's what I thought, I just want to make sure it wasn't.
Yeah, we're not losing county funds to pay for that. We're not using Medicaid funds to pay for it. That's out of, if you want to go, that's out of your pocket. I pay for my job, you pay for yours, so.
Jesse, how does it work in the budget? There's a request for Council on Aging for $50,000, but the building you're in has a request for $5,000 also.
Okay.
The William Tell Center.
So that is not for the building itself. I haven't seen it, so I can't really speak for it.
It's William Tell Senior Citizens.
Senior citizens, that's correct.
It's a different group.
That is a totally different entity. They provide a Saturday night dance, Tuesday night Uker.
Senior citizens.
Gotcha. Tuesday night Uker, and then they do like a coffee and cookies and maybe play some cards once a month. Whereas, you know, we have 25 to 30 activities planned every single month, and we're there Monday through Friday, keeping the doors open, all of those things. So that's not directly related to us.
And one more thing, I just wanted to, for you to clarify, because I think I know the answer, but there's people that ask me, so I think it's a good time for you to address this, is sometimes people think when they rent that, because organizations can rent that building, that you are getting, that your organization is getting the money for that, but it's actually the city of Tell City is getting the money for that.
We don't see a dime out of it. It's a beautiful facility. Everybody wants to use it. Basically, it's hard, like in hassle for me, because everybody's like, question, 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 question. I don't have the answer. You know, we've got to call City Hall, and we're fed up with them. We don't see a dime of that money. We pay rent there. You know, we rent that building every month, just like you would if you were having an event or something, so.
You have to rent the downstairs, too?
Yeah. We have very reasonable rent, but at the same time, you know.
And I do appreciate you putting your budget in here. I don't know that that was a requirement this year. I kind of think every year we need to start doing that. Maybe we can just ask for the budget, how everybody else feels. I like it. I like to see it. So we didn't require it this year, but appreciate you saying that.
Sure, absolutely. Anything else? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, listen. Nathan Hill, Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening.
Hi.
Don't know if I can follow that, but. I'm Nathan Hill with Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission. I'm here tonight with our request for the per capita fee of 65 cents. That totals $12,460.50. This is compiled with the other five counties that we serve, and this is put together to match both the EDA planning grant that we receive, the Economic Development Administration, and also the planning grant that we receive through NDOT. So the EDA grant helps us to go out and develop all the grant projects, and that enables us to do that at no cost to the communities. The NDOT planning grant, NDOT directs us to go out and do traffic counts on non-state open roads. So we also provide support to the NDOT-Vincennes District as well, as far as their planning. So that's what the fee enables us to do. I was here earlier this year with our annual update, so I won't go into the full detail, but I will say, right now, we're very active in Perry County. This is, the water improvements is, you know, everybody needs them, so we are out working with ANTRO, trying to figure out how they can fund their line extensions. The Troy Township Water, they have improvements as well that are needed, so we're working with both of those. The town of Troy has a need for water improvements. We kind of got shot down on the first, you know, attempt to look at some funding for them. We're going to try again, but they do have those needs. And then Cannleton as well. They are currently going through a study phase and looking towards sometime next year, once everything comes together, submitting some grant applications for them. Tell City, the Clarence Project at the old hospital, it's moving a little slower than what we had hoped, but the building is gone. Now it's just the debris, and that should be fully cleaned up soon, and that grant get closed out. And then in full swing now, the Tell City Owner Occupied Rehab Grant Program for Tell City residents, but this is for owner, for repairs on owner-occupied homes. And then also, the two projects that we've been talking about that got funded three and four years ago, that has kind of got clogged up in the federal level, the RACE Grant for rail improvements for the port, the bid opening is today, finally, and so that's going to get underway. And then the pier improvements project down at the port. Again, we've been waiting for that grant agreement. They keep telling us it's coming, and supposedly it's coming by the end of this month, so.
In several years.
Several years.
That's crazy. I remember.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah. So hopefully, that will come through, that project, because those two, we really, I mean, they've been hanging on too long, and we want to get those done. So, and then we're still, you know, all the other requests that, you know, we're trying, we keep trying. The federal funding picture right now is a little more unclear than what we like to see. A lot of the programs were paused at the first of this year. They're starting to roll back out, and, you know, we just have to see what that's going to look like here in the next couple of months and really the coming year, so.
I know I ask you a lot of questions about grants, so I appreciate it, because I have a lot of entities asking me, so.
Yeah, and that's what we.
Go to you, because you usually know.
Yeah. We try to find, and I know it doesn't work out all the time, but that's, we, that's what we want from all of you is, you know, anytime you hear of some need that's out there, let us know, and we'll see if there's something out there that we can help with.
And I just remembered Sherri's email about updating the list. Is it too late, or I can send it by tomorrow?
You can send it by tomorrow.
I have some ideas, so.
We'll still take it. We have to turn that into EDA by the end of October, so really it's just to give us time to compile it, so.
I'll do that, too.
You have a few days.
I don't like to be late.
Give her a few days, she'll take them.
No. Yep. Anybody have any questions for Nathan or?
I do have one question. I know a while back you had mentioned that you could do road counts for the blacktop roads. Do you know of any sources at all for road counters for the gravel roads?
So gravel roads are hard, you know, they won't take the tubes that go across, they'll just slice into them. There is, it's called MIO Vision, which is video.
Okay, yeah, I think that she may have used some of that, so.
Okay, yeah. So now, we actually looked into, well, we asked NDOT if we could borrow one theirs. They wouldn't let us. They only have a few of those, but you see them out and about, you know, they're the ones with the big, you know, antenna-type thing on the top. We looked into getting one there, like $5,000 to $8,000 each, and we just couldn't, we wouldn't use them that much. But really, to get a traffic count on a gravel road, that's really what you're going to have to use. We still hope that maybe NDOT will let us borrow one at some point, especially if there is a need, because really, you know, if you're looking at paving a gravel road, you need to count before it gets paved. I mean, that's, that's really.
Or if these counties could go together and get one.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a very significant cost, and we could all share it.
Yeah, and that's actually something we're talking about, is how, you know, how can we share some larger purchases like that and hand it around counties, so, yeah.
Sorry, Paul. Go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I'm learning from most of you, so, but, you know, there's some of these gravel roads, there's 250 miles of gravel road in Perry County. They'll probably never all get paved. Not all paved in DuPont County, but, you know, some of them are always going to be gravel, and frankly, last winter really sort of, you know, was a test on the gravel roads, but, you know, some of them are always going to be gravel, at least for a long time. And, you know, for that reason, I know that, you know, Kelly's been around on a lot of gravel roads, you know, getting data, but sometimes I think it would be good to have a counter, because I've heard of different counts on different gravel roads, so, you know, I'm just asking if there's a possibility of getting a counter, and the answer would probably be no right now, so.
Put it on the agenda for a multi-county. That's what I would do.
Well, Kelly and Cory are on our board, so we can, that is one of. Well, Kelly and Cory are on our board, so we can, that is one of, we have looked into that, you know, but maybe, yeah.
There's six counties, so if it's $5,000 to $8,000, something we can share the resource, be better than everybody having to buy their own, so.
Now, I'm just asking, because the only thing anybody ever asked me about is gravel roads. That's it. You know, so anyway, that's what I'm asking.
No, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I appreciate your advice on that, so.
Anybody have anything else? If not, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Mr. Temple with the Perry County Fairgrounds.
Chris Temple with the Perry County Fairgrounds. I am the current president there. We were asking for $15,000, the same as last year. We've got a aging facility. It's, it's hard to invest a lot of money into it when you don't use it regularly, but it is expensive to keep it up and maintain. So every year, the insurance line item is their number one expense. It's about $16,000 on insurance. We are a 19-member voluntary board. We do have a full board going into '26 for the first time. So the only thing we have hard done is the grass mowing, and then cleaning after some inside rentals. We do take pride in the grass and try to keep a presentable facility when you come up the hill. One of our major expenses last year was the new electronic sign. I don't think anybody's seen it on Highway 66. ARP helped fund a part of it. Jordan American Bank chipped in, but we've still out $9,000 on that. So that's an $18,000 sign there. For rentals, it comes in handy, because people want to wait till last minute, and then they want their name on the board. And now we can do this from our home, instead of me running a half hour to Telsity, trying to figure out if I spelled letters right, and put it on the board. So, and then a half hour back home. So that was a convenience to that, and to draw attention to the fairgrounds. Some people didn't even know where it was. We had a track, you know, whenever a tractor pull, motocross, they dropped us three or four times. That was the main reason of that. You're going to see some silly stuff on the sign. If you drive by now, some of it's upside down, just trying to draw attention to it.
It works, because I noticed it.
Did you notice it? Yeah. So our main goal is to provide a free facility for the Purdue Extension Agent and the 4-H Council. They can have it at any time at no cost. Another example would be the National Nights Out. We can have two weeks go of the last minute switch. That was free of charge to them. I hope they like the facility and come back, because it was, it sure draw a large crowd up there to get the attention up there for that. So we do some reduced rentals with some other nonprofits in the county, Special Olympics being one. We do work with the Control Board on some spade neuter clinics up there. Wedding receptions, graduations, class reunions, family gatherings. We are going to host the Farmer Table this year in October up there. We have a car show this year. We are an election poll site for Perry County. One of the new things we've been doing up there is the Open Beef Show. That's normally April, March. You've got some kids that spend their time on ball fields, and we've got kids that want to spend their time with livestock. So we've done that about three or four years. The first year, we only had 20 animals show up. This year, we had 81 show up, and they're coming from four or five hours away, northern Indiana, Ohio, Kentucky. And, you know, they're normally spending money in the county, and some of them even get hotel rooms while they're here. So. And our major one is the County Fair. So I've seen a lot of guys up there during the fair. I've tried to stop and talk to you up there. So some of the new projects going on is, we bought 15 acres from the Ramsey Development. We sold 18 acres back in behind the patio that was wetland. We didn't think we'd ever have a use for it. Dr. Brockman actually bought it to tie in with his property. Liderings will be clear cutting eight acres up there. They're only going to give us like $4,000 for it, but it's going to help them clean up at the end, just to get all that stuff chipped and mulched and get out of there. So.
What purpose do you have for that?
Well, with the, with the Ramses moving and selling ground, we use their facility on the north side of our fairgrounds for parking. We really don't know what the future of that is. Some of that behind our horse barn will be leveled out for parking. We are trying to get a new horse and pony arena in there, just strictly for them. We done a arena expansion probably 10 years ago with the black sand down there. But it's hard to get the tractor pull, the motocross, and the horse and pony events all scheduled in there. So if we can get a specialized arena for that, then maybe bring in some other MBH8 shovels or something like that in there. So that's two of the things we're looking at.
I know, again, I'm aware that you had to rent a tent for sheep or whatever this year. Do you, I mean, is that, is there a sign that it's going to continue and expand that you're going to need that?
Well, that was, that's a good problem to have. Yes, we, our 4-H program expanded really good this year. The livestock numbers are all species up. We don't know why, because you talked to other counties, and they're in the decline mode yet. So that tent was $2,100, so we have to put livestock.
That's my son-in-law's reason I ask. I know it's expensive for you to do that. Again, I'm not asking for him, but whether or not that's something that you need to think about expanding.
We do fair evaluation every year, and the tent was the biggest positive for everybody for some reason. I don't know why. They enjoyed it. But it is an expense, and it come at a short notice. So we do pick up new donors every year. We've got excellent donor lists that we, we draw money from. But there is some things in the process of looking at the horse and pony barn. It's a specialized barn. I mean, for a couple of years now, the horse and pony has been declining. So we have talked about looking at some thoughts of leveling it, and putting up just a concrete slab, po barn, that could be a multi-purpose.
Whichever.
Whichever species it is. It'll have removable pinning, you know, kind of like what we've done to our pig barn now. It used to have specialized pins, not be multi-purpose with the removable pinning. So that's kind of what we're looking on the horse and pony barn, is setting it up like that. So.
You said something about you didn't know why the numbers were so high for the animals this year. And I have to say that a lot of people were praising the volunteers, the programs, all the leaders, all the stuff. They were, I heard it all throughout the fair. And so I think you got a good group.
This is my last year I can be president of the fairgrounds. This might be the last time you see me here, but maybe not. They might volunteer me, but.
You're still welcome to come.
We do have term limits, so I'm on some other organizations, you see that you get stuck being in the, in officer role for multiple years. And with term limits, it allows new thoughts, new people get in there and do that. So. And then we've got a mandatory one-year cool-off period. So once you term out, you cannot be on the board for another year, and then you can get back on, if there's a spot to get on. So that's a unique bylaws that the fairgrounds have with those there.
Is it Howard, your nephew?
Howard's my nephew.
I appreciate the tour of all the barns with Howard. Yeah, he really took me around.
And he's one that is in the show, the cattle show circuit. So they travel southern Indiana, Ohio, Kentucky, showing cattle, and that mainly through the fall, winter, and spring. And that's born and raised on a farm. That's, he don't have much use for sports, so.
Yeah. He knows about.
He knows about the animals.
Have you always had those term limits?
Yes.
Really?
The fairgrounds has. Now, the council will speak next. You know, they've got a difference. You've got, for some of the new ones, you've got the Purdue Extension, which has many programs. 4-H is one of the programs. The fairgrounds is, owns the ground, owns the buildings, and does the maintenance, and does the county fair planning. The 4-H Council, which will speak next, does strictly the Purdue 4-H projects. And that's where we supply a facility for them to have their meetings, have the county fair, you know, show their projects off. So a lot of you've seen us at the Swartrefest, so we are out working, trying to fundraise our own money where we can. So the money you guys have helped has been greatly appreciated. We thank you for it, and I hope you can see the, get us in the budget somewhere for this year.
I'm going to give you my email and contact information, because I want to get your infrastructure needs to get them to Indiana 15. So the barns or anything like that, if you have any, they'll put them on a rolling list that doesn't go away, and then when things come up, we can contact you. So.
I know there's another organization in the county that's looking to donate some money. That's possibly going to go to the fairgrounds and start kind of a building fund. It's kind of what's, we're starting on. So. And that's where our horse and pony barn kind of, between the property and the barns, all snowballed quicker than I thought it would. I told people, once we bought the property, it'd be a five-year project to get cleared and get things going. And it's, it went faster than what I anticipated, which is good. So. But to go ahead and get all the stuff dug out is going to be a very expensive and start level in dirt. But we've got some good donors that's in the dirt working business that I'm hoping we can contact and tap into there. Any other things?
Any questions for Mr. Temple? If not, thank you. Appreciate it. Just give me that list when you can, then I'll get it over to them. Okay, next up, Ms. Hilton Hold of Perry County 4-H Council. And she has a guess.
Good evening. I'm Pam Hilton Hold, and I am currently the 4-H Council President. Just to kind of let you know a little bit, I've been a leader for 35 years, and 4-H is...
No term limits.
You're right.
No term limits.
Well, we don't, we can still be president, but we do have to go off after a six-year term for a year, and then come back on. Yeah, we have some term limits, too. So, but anyway, so 4-H has kind of always been my life. My parents were both leaders for 55 and 52 years, so it's just kind of been ingrained in my, in my blood. And I'm so glad to be able to, to give back to the community and to help the youth of our, of our county, and to give them opportunities that maybe sports, other things, doesn't give them. Just a little bit about our year in 4-H this year. We had 71 volunteers, okay? And so, and they put in a lot, a lot of time, not just, they do their own club meetings. We have county-wide events. So they put in a lot of time on their own. This year, we had 200 4-Hers, and those are grades three through 12. And then we have 56 minis, which are grades K1 and 2. So a total of 256 kids this year. And just a little bit about what we do as a council. As Chris was explaining, we kind of do the 4-H part, okay, where they kind of take care of the grounds. So, so this year, the last couple of years, we have been going to a camp up around New Albany area, and the cost is pretty expensive, but it's a very, very good camp. There's a lot of activities, and the camp is $210 apiece. We paid $190 of that fee. The parents only had to pay 20. So we paid $4,765 for 20 campers, one counselor and two adult chaperones. And they said that was the biggest of any of the counties that had been there. And I think it's because we felt like we could, you know, give back and get those kids to those camps and do a lot of, really, a lot of learning in socialization and activities. Another thing that we fund is the 4-H trips. One of the trips is Academy, and they go to Purdue, and they learn about different job opportunities and careers. And we sent one kid, and then we had five that went to band. And I think why you were the band, no, you weren't one of them that went to band. Then we sent five band kids, okay? And so that was $250 a trip for each kid. And then the bus to go from Dale to Purdue was $200. And again, those kids only had to pay $20 per trip. And they also said that we had the highest number of band kids at that band camp at Purdue. So we feel like we're really, you know, feel like we can take that money and put it back out into the kids to where they can do these adventures, these activities, and, and the parents are at a lot of money. A program that I started back in 2019, Martha Basher's also a leader with me. It's called Afterward Ventures, and basically I saw the need, that a lot of kids need to get outside and do activities and not be there on their computers or their phones or whatever. And so what we do is, four activities a year, we do a winter, spring, summer, and fall activity. And so we've had 24 activities. We just completed our last one this year on Sunday, and we've never repeated. And what's really cool is, we get a lot of kids that maybe aren't traditional 4-Hers. Maybe they just, you know, they maybe don't have the time or to do like the meetings, but they can go to this one activity, okay? And it's usually a six to seven-hour day, usually a Saturday or a Sunday. And we go and do activities, and we usually provide the food and the transportation, and then the activity. And we, we usually take that, and the kids pay a very small fee to do, to do those activities.
Can you give us an example of one of those?
Okay. So for example, this weekend, we went to Trummell's Farm Market, and we did their farm educational experience, which is normally for schools, but he let me do it as a 4-H club on the weekend. So we got, he, you know, taught us about the life cycle of pumpkin, and, and the kids got to pick their own pumpkin. We got to do all the activities there. And then they made us a bonfire. We roasted hot dogs and marshmallows. And, and so just a lot of experiences. And what's nice is, I happened to notice, like, we paid $12 for that entry fee for each kid and each adult, and then the regular price was like $24. And so, you know, it was like half the cost. So it really was, you know, a big difference. So this year, we had 73 kids. Now, some of those are duplicate, because some kids go maybe, you know, each time, and 20 volunteers that participated in our four activities. And so our council pays for the volunteers' admission, the food. Perry Central this year has allowed us to use, as we were having trouble with transportation. So Perry Central, I asked them, and they are letting us use their mini buses, as long as a school employee will drive the bus. We pay for the gas for that. And, and then we do help the kids out on some of the costs. So it's usually a smaller fee. As far as the 4-H fair goes, we pay for all the books that the kids get. If they sign up for a project, whether it be foods or horses or woodworking, they have a book that they get, and they can keep that book or they can return it back, but it's, it's basically no cost to them. We provide all the trophies for the grand champions, all the ribbons. The last two years, we've done what's called Fairbucks, and it's kind of like Monopoly money. And so the kids get money for taking their projects. And we also do different activities that encourages them to participate, and they get money, and they have to spend it at the fair. They love it. They love the Fairbucks. We also provide four days of fun day activities, and we have to buy the, the materials for that. We also pay what's called animal training registration. If a kid is signing up to go take an animal to the fair, they have to have a training to make sure they know how to take care of that animal. So we provide that fee for them. And we also, for kids that are either seniors or their final year, we do awards for them to recognize that. So like I said, the 4-H program through the 4-H Council... So, um, like I said, the 4H program through the 4H Council, we do take care of the 4H program and, uh, you know, we are really, uh, we feel like an asset to be able to have, give the kids opportunities in our community and we really appreciate that you guys have helped us in the past and hope that you can continue to do that. I have a special guest speaker, Mr. Wyatt Hears. He's our, one of our 4Hers is going to speak to you about some of his experiences.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Wyatt Hears, I'm 16, I'm a junior at Perry Central and I'm proud to be in 4H. I've been 4H for nine years as a, a regular 4Her, does not include a mini 4H, which is a kindergarten through third grade. Uh, 4H has shaped me to who I am today. I'm a member of the Leopold Gang and have the honor of serving as my club's health and safety leader for two years and a recreation, a recreational leader for a year. I also served as this year's 2025 4H King. Through 4H, I have had the chance to grow not only as a leader, but also a friend, a mentor and a community member. Some of my favorite projects over the year have included creating small electrical systems, showing chickens and being able to show beef cattle for the first time this year, although I have to admit, I think the cow showed me a little bit. Those projects started as hobbies, but became life skills that I'll carry forward into the future. Beyond projects, the trips and opportunities provided by 4H have been some of the best experiences of my life. One of the most impactful ways 4H has supported me and so many others in, through this community is attending statewide trips and events. The Perry County 4H Council will sponsor up to 90% of the cost for trips like 4H Academy, 4H Band, 4H Roundup and 4H Camp. Each of these trips averages about $250 and without that support, many families would not be able to send their kids. As a result, I've been able to attend 4H Camp. I did not get to stay the night sadly because it was during COVID, but I had made lots of friends in a two-day period. And I personally know students that have been able to go to the 4H Band Trip. Some of my peers have said how, I quote, "4H Band greatly helped me branch out in the realm of high school music, meet new people and create memories that will last a lifetime." In addition, another student told me, "It helped me overcome my fears of staying in a dorm with other students and it's fun to be able to play music with different people I've never met." The truth is 4H is more than showing animals or completing a project, those, though those are wonderful parts of it. It's about developing young people into leaders, teachers and problem solvers. It's about giving kids opportunities to find where they belong and where they can grow. I can honestly say I wouldn't be the person I am today without the experiences I've had getting through 4H and support I've received along the way. Thank you for being here this evening and for your continued support of the youth in Perry County. Your encouragement is what allows opportunities like 4H to truly make a difference. Because of your commitment, young people like myself are not only able to step outside of our comfort zones, but also discover interests we may never know, build lifelong friendships and develop the confidence to take on leadership roles in our schools and communities. And without 4H, I would probably never have been able to stand here and talk. The investment you make in the next generation ensures that we have the tools, experiences and support to grow into responsible, capable and carrying their goals. I can say with certainty that without the backing of people like you, my journey and the journeys of my peers will look very different. On behalf of all youth who call Perry County home, thank you for believing us and being part of the story of our growth and success.
Do you still have that chicken I bought in '24?
Yeah.
Do you have one of the chickens with the real fluffy hair or, I don't know what they're called, but...
No, I got some of the chickens without feathers on their necks.
Oh, that's cool. There were a lot of chickens, a lot of different types of chickens this year, it seemed like.
Yeah.
So, I think I saw you up there. You might, you may have told me about a few of them. Yeah, you did a good job with that.
Well done.
Thank you. I think it teaches responsibility and hard work and sticking with things and I think it's a great thing. You did a good job.
Yeah, any other questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Melissa Sharp with SERS is next. I think I got some information from you.
Yes, I think she dropped them off a few weeks ago.
Yeah, this one.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We can press those around.
I emailed everybody.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I was going to say, okay.
I'm Melissa Sharp, I'm the CEO, COO for SERS currently. I actually will be stepping into the CEO role December 1st. Cheryl Mullis, who is a longtime Perry County resident, is retiring at the end of the year and is actually enjoying a long rest pool out west trip right now, which is why she's not here tonight with you. But we are well established in the community of Perry County. We've been serving Perry County since 1968. Our request is $45,000, the same as years previous. We directly support more than 150 Perry County children and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. 123 residents have received employment transition and HCBS services, home and community-based services totaling roughly 64,000 hours during the fiscal year of '24. And then we have served 47 children ages zero to three through the First Steps Program and that amounts to about 5,600 hours of therapy. That might be occupational, physical, speech or developmental therapies. We do have a small transportation program called LinkinGo, I know a couple of people have mentioned that. We provide about 780 trips a year through the Medicaid brokers.
In Perry County?
In Perry County. A lot of those trips are our own clients and residents, so we also run a day program at our Perry County facility, so trying to order those residential clients back and forth to the day program are happening now.
Okay. Is a trip only?
Yes. So our request, the return on investment, we do about $1.5 million in payroll for Perry County residents, as well as about 120,000 local vendor usage between restaurants or employment services, getting staff into and in jobs in the community. So for every, for the $45,000, that's a $33 return on every dollar you give to us, so. Um, employment is one focus of SERS, getting an individual with a disability into a job that they like, that they can handle and that an employer will work with them on. Currently, our individuals that are placed average about $13.25 an hour. 40% of those individuals place work at least 20 hours a week. And then we also have two staff that we employ called Community Work Incentive employees. They help individuals that currently receive Social Security go back into the workforce. So what, what can I do but still receive my benefit? And then we also serve 75 Perry County High School students through our pre-Ex program or Pre-Employment Transitional Services program. The purpose of the requested funds, 45% will go to direct staff wages. Those are those individuals working with someone with a disability. That could be a residential service, that could be taking them out into the community. 17.5% will actually go towards community integration activities. 12% towards that transportation assistance. We also were greatly affected by the Chrysler recall and have lost quite a bit through that, so we have, are looking into actually purchasing a vehicle just to be used since we don't have that end-up vehicle and we don't have any idea how it will be out of commission. And then job coaching and support, again, those are the employment opportunities for an individual with a disability. And then 10% to administrative support and reporting. Anticipated impact of those dollars, reduced waitlist for a daily living support, increased employment and inclusion opportunities and enhanced transportation to jobs, healthcare, whatever. Thank you, we appreciate all of our county's support. And can I answer any of your questions?
Provided a lot of information, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Melissa?
Absolutely.
If not, and did you say you're, you're getting ready to promote F to the CEO or you are the CEO?
I am. Well, so I have been put into the position by the board. Cheryl does not retire until December 31st, so I'm not going to take the position until December 1st.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Please all go down.
Yep. Okay, yep, if you just want to share that information, if anyone wants to review it, it's a little bit in the addition to what she has provided. Okay. One more here. Let's see who it is. Molly? Oh, two. Two. Oh, so did you sign up? Oh, you're after this then, okay. Is that okay? I think, right?
We're for the CBB budget.
For the budget.
Oh, okay. Or do they want to... Okay. We'll do Ms. Molly and then we'll talk to you guys after that. That's okay. Okay, Molly with Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. So let's go through, okay.
Hi.
Thanks for the information that you provided. We got it on email. Oh.
Good evening. I know there's some new faces. My name's Molly, I'm the president, founder of Rivers Edge Animal Shelter and I'm here tonight to discuss budget. And you see the letter that I sent, I did have an increase this year. We are asking for an increase this year and we are also asking for part of the restricted fund. So there's a restricted fund for the animal shelter and that half of the building gets leased out and that rent money goes into a restricted fund. And so we're also requesting $10,000 from that fund. And I've provided the budget for you all with the expenses and payroll.
Yep, I do see your budget, which I appreciate. And you've approached these other entities, I guess, Tell City and Cannleton and...
So we had the Cannleton, I'm sorry, we had Tell City last night and was not pleased with Tell City's response. They are not approving and do not support the $55,000. So they are going to, as of how I took it last night, they are going to approve what they approved this year, which would be the $48,000. So that leaves us 7,000 short on that one item from Tell City, which will have to go down to the bottom and that will have to also be raised for us to do further fundraising and donations.
Has Cannleton said anything yet?
Cannleton has not. I've heard positive things back from Cannleton though, so I'm still on the positive with Cannleton that that will still happen, but all these meetings take place right around the same time.
Right.
So that's, it's, it's hard to get answers.
Sure.
For each one, because Tell City last night, they wanted to know what the county was contributing. And because here's, and here's the biggest argument that, that I face as the director of the animal shelter, providing animal services for Perry County daily, I run into, it's the county's responsibility. It's the county's responsibility. I have a hard time with that. I don't think it's just the county's responsibility. I think it's, it's everyone's responsibility because it's, it's, it's everyone's problem. And right now, Tell City has the biggest problem. Tell City draws the biggest need from us. Tell City takes the most resources from us. So I have a really hard time with that statement. Like I said, I think everybody should pay their fair share and animal, animal welfare in, in the shelter, it, it is a county need, we do have a problem. We, like they said before, there's two animal calls daily and right now those calls are coming to us. Right now those calls are coming to me because I will not put my staff out on those calls. I'm a, we have a staff of four and that consists of myself, two kennel tags and then a manager who handles all of our adoptions. So she knows all of, all the behaviors of every animal in that building, she handles all the emails and she kind of handles the operations of the, you know, the people and I handle operations of the facility and, and them as well. So we are a very small staff and when you start talking to other animal shelters around the area, the staffing that they have is way higher than what we do and along with the funding as well. So I feel like for what we, what we do, what we offer here in the county, for what we have and then what we are funded, I feel like we offer a pretty great service and we do a great job. Like I said, we do offer, we help the community daily and I know a lot of it's behind the scenes and a lot of it is not, a lot of it's not shared with the public, so people don't know, but a lot of, a lot of our residents in this county are hurting and they need help. They need help with food, they need help with vet care, they need help with span neutering and they can't afford the vet care for that. In, in my job, I don't want, I don't want to take your animal because my shelter's full right now and it's hard to get the animals that we have adopted out because there's so many. There's more animals than there is adopters. So we've also had to kind of pivot and help residents in our community keep their animals. Now, if they're being neglected, that, that's, that's a different ballgame, but if they need help with food every now and then, or if they need help with their vaccination or they need help getting a rabies shot so they can move into the apartment, we are helping with that service. So that's outside of the shelter work too and that's one of the things that we also want to stress here is we're not just doing shelter work, we're, we're doing animal welfare related work to help our community and we're, we're doing that on a daily basis. And we're, we're doing that on a daily basis. So any questions that you have about...
You're full right now? Are you at max capacity?
Are you ever not full?
Very.
Seldom.
When I say that I'm not full, I guess someone hears that. Or no. And they change that very quick. And we are seeing, I would say within the past six months, we've seen a lot of dumping around our, around our county with dogs. And unfortunately, it's not just with one dog anymore. It's, it's multiple dogs.
A litter or...
Litter. We just last, two days ago, it was three dogs. So it's, it's not... And that's what hurts a facility like ours is we're not just filling up one kennel, we're filling up three kennels in one intake. And they're, they're full of lees. So you, you have to do the gamut on them. And then most of them are, are pits, of course, which, which makes it harder to adopt. So it's a longer stay. Like I said, sometimes I feel like I'm fighting an uphill battle with this. But if we didn't, where would we be? If we did, if we did nothing, we would be in, we would be in such a worse situation than where we are now. And in the three years that we've been doing this, I have seen an improvement. We have made progress with the stray cats. And we have gotten dogs that would not have been fixed otherwise, spayed and neutered. And they, they're not going to have puppies anymore. And we have, we have stats of those. We've started keeping... Because we've started offering that as a help for our residents because getting an, getting an animal fixed is expensive. So we're offering that service as well. So we're trying to add services to the animal shelter to, to, to help our residents in the community.
I feel, I feel like we've come a long way in the last few years with your direction.
Thank you.
I mean, it was a big problem three years ago.
We still have a big problem, but I, I feel like we've, we've come a long way.
Yeah.
But we have a long way to go too.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
How many employees do you have?
Three.
That includes you?
Including me, there's four.
So what, where's your salary at on here?
My salary, so I don't have full time. You're seeing just three. One of those is a two-part times.
Okay.
So I'm the first, then Anne.
No, you calculate that line. It says employee tax slash unemployment.
We do it with...
What is that?
It's with Marsh Terry, so it all comes out at once. So that's what, she's just doing a 20%. That's just what she budgets.
What comes, what's that cover?
Covers their social security, all their healthcare stuff, and then unemployment.
It wouldn't be that much.
I know, it's over budget. It's a little high.
Yeah, it's a lot high. It shouldn't only be 7.65, and then your unemployment's a very small amount.
We did it last year, Terry. Yeah, I remember this. Yeah.
It was wrong last year also. That's, that's your fluff in your budget, I guess.
Very little fluff. I had a question for you. I forgot. Those spay and neuter clinics, you're a nonprofit. So is that something I should add to the list for possible grant for Indiana Region 15? Because I have to turn that in tomorrow. So I was just wondering if, if, if you had any needs like that or any, any ideas for needs like that that I could turn in also.
I mean, we would love to have a spay and neuter clinic to come here for dogs.
I can add it to the list. There's no guarantees, but that way if something comes through, they can reach out and say, hey, we've got this opportunity or...
The, the clinic, the spay and neuter clinic is not going to be coming back the fall of this year. So if, if we could get a, if we could get a spay and neuter clinic, anything helps. But it has to be affordable too. We have to make it affordable for our residents.
Yeah. I think that would be the idea with the, with the grant, if we could find one, that it would help subsidize that. So to make the cost lower for the people to encourage them to do it.
Right.
I'll add that if you're okay with it.
Absolutely.
What percentage of your animals are not adopted or don't get adopted?
What percentage of my animals? Two.
Two percent?
I'm going to go very low. We adopt, we adopt our animals out. Now, if we have to euthanize, we will euthanize for aggression. And then we euthanize for illness. Because we are a shelter and...
And it's a big range.
That, and if the illness, we can't treat. We can treat minor, okay? I, I don't want to, I misspoke there. But if we have a great illness that's going to be costly, it's unfortunate, but that tough decision has to be made.
Okay.
Because you see what, you see what we operate on. And I've had to raise the vet expenses. I raised it up this year. Because so far this year, we've, we've just been getting annihilated with vet expenses. And a lot of these are, they've been unplanned.
What type of, what generally falls into that too? What, what type of veterinary services are generally provided to animals?
So every animal has to get spayed and neutered before they leave the shelter. So we adopt, we do not adopt intact animals out. They all have their vaccines. They all get rabies.
Heartworm.
That's part of the, the vaccine. You said part of, correct? Yes, that's part of the regular vaccine. We heartworm test. So we've added that test on to our services, which that heartworm test at the vet is a $45 test. We will do it at the shelter if we can. And that, that does save us, it's about $10 a test at the shelter. But we do have those animals. We've got one right now that I can't, we can't get blood out of him. So we're going to have to take him to the vet. And they're going to have to do that. So that's going to be an, an extra expense just for that particular animal. If we do have to euthanize an animal, then we have to vet. We do it under diversion of our vet. We do not euthanize at the shelter. And then we have to pay for the cremation of the animal. You have to dispose of the animal. So we, we cremate and it, it is costly to cremate. It's, it's $100 to cremate an animal. So to euthanize an animal, it's about $200. Then for, we, we don't just euthanize. I mean, some, some have to. Some shelters do. We, we choose not to. I mean, we will, we will adopt out. We will look for rescues. We will foster... Pardon me?
Take a phone, I think.
Do you have any long-term residents?
I do. I do. We have, we have long-term residents at the shelter. And then I have long-term residents at my barn that have not been adopted out. I've, I've got one now. He's a runner. If, he's a great dog. I wish I could have adopted him out, but he would run. He's been brought back three times for running. In all reality, I should probably euthanize him, but I can't do it. So, because he's a good dog and I know that there's a place for him. But, so we don't, we don't euthanize for space. I will make space.
Any more questions for Ms. Molly? If not, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the information. Okay. Now... I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, so we're finished with these. Okay. We are finished with the people who signed up to speak. Oh, okay. Let's get it. Okay. So next... Next, we are going to read the 2002...
We got the CBB budget. Or is she going to go over that?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. You can go ahead. Yep. For the CBB. And I think we got that today. Stan, you, did you send that out? Yep.
I made everybody copies.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, it's not a problem.
Need to make this.
Well, we're not here to ask for any money, so just...
Do you have any money we can have? Can we ask you for money if that's possible?
Today, we had our CBB budget meeting this morning. And we approved our budget. And I think Stan had sent all of you guys a copy of it. I can go over it individually with you, or I can, if you got any questions, I can start with that first. But I can just say a couple of things about the CBB that we're really in a new phase with it. And we're going to be completely a commission board now as of today. And that puts us down to seven members on our, on our board. Just recently, on June 2nd, we hired Eric Fred here, our new director. He's come on board on June. If you'd like, he can come up and talk about himself a little bit, a little bit later, if you want to hear a little bit about his background. He has done a fantastic job since he's been on board with us. We've most probably accomplished more in the last three or four months than we did in the last couple of years. I've been on the board about two and a half years. I'm president of the commission this year. And so we really got good things going for us. If you look at the budget there, our innkeeper's tax, that's how we get funded. It's 5% through the cabins and then also the hotels. So that's how we get told to fund it. So more heads in bed, so to speak, that's my term analogy. More heads in bed, more revenue to get. So that comes into Airbnb's, BPROs, and then direct payments into it as well. Got a 15-year history here of what we've done over the years. And it's gone up and down, up and down, up and down. We had some record times during the COVID time. And then since then, it's starting to go back down again. Some of the restrictions that we have here in the county is we only have a couple of hotels, which really, you know, hurts us a little bit. And some of those hotels are rented out, I think, to some of the local manufacturers over 30 days. So if you're there for over 30 days, we don't get any revenue off of that. So we heard rumors that there might be a new Hampton Inn coming in, so that would help us out tremendously. We have about approximately, that, it changes every day, about 56 cabins total that can be rented. Somewhere in there, 53 to 56 cabins. But some of those cabins, there's one owner for five or six or seven. So I say that's total that could be rented somewhere in that neighborhood. This year, we're anticipating a gross revenue of about $173,704. That's based on, you know, what we're annualizing this year in 2024. So it's an approximate. We don't know exactly what that's going to be. We're looking at about $12,000 in interest coming in as well from some of the investments and CDs that we do have. And then you'll notice there on that third line, there's $20,000 that we're going to take out of our savings to help fulfill some of the additional things that we put into our budget this year. We're focusing on, just to give you a little bit of idea, on five different areas, which is our mission, so to speak, over the next couple of years. And I'll name those five real quick. We're looking at digital marketing. And digital marketing is, is a big part of the budget this year, if you look at it. And what we're trying to do is, we tried some digital marketing a couple of years ago, but we were very narrow focused there with that 50-mile radius. I own a cap and most of my rounds come within a 200, 250-mile radius. Not that we don't get more local people, but we get more people from Indianapolis and Cincinnati and Springfield, Illinois, and places like that. So the digital marketing is going to be, we're going to contract with somebody. We don't know who that's going to be with, but we're going to target markets, so to speak, out into those areas. And we're going to go for the hunters. We're going to go for the boaters. We're going to go for the campers. You know, city routes, things of that nature. So we're really going to focus in and target those. We're not just going to blow out and throw advertisement out. We're going to be targeting those people throughout the year. And that's a big part of the budget. If you look at it, it's about $36,000 in there for that. The other thing, so the other thing that we're looking at this coming year is a website. We've been part of the Pick Perry website over the past years. It's been a great relationship there as well. However, what we want to do, mostly it'll be part of that, but we want to do our own website. And the reason for that is Eric is professionally, he's a professional photographer. And he can talk about that a little bit. But we want to have a website that we can update every, every month, every week, all the time. We just approved going in and buying a drone today. So he'll be going out and taking drone shots of campers and boaters and fishermen tournaments and things of that nature. So we want to put that on the website as well. So we want to keep that website fresh. And we're in the process of doing that right now. The third item is a brochure. And we've been, had a brochure on our budget for about three or four years. Actually, Eric started on this most probably in July. And we will have a brochure by November 1st. I mean, that's how close we are. We're into a second approval as we speak right now. I've seen copies of it. It's really a great brochure. So brochures are in the, in the marketing and Facebook and everything else that's going on. It's a dying entity, but we still need to have it. So we're going to continue with the brochure and distribute the brochures to the different areas. The third area, or fourth area that we're looking at is hospitality. And you might say, hospitality, what do you mean by that? We're building relationships with all the cabin owners. We want to build relationships. We had not had much of a relationship with owners in the, in the hotels in the past. Eric, I think you've contacted what 95% of them at this point. And introductions and things of that nature, sit down, talk to them, visit them, get in, taking broch, pictures and communicating with them to determine what their needs really are. And that's what we want to do. We want to find out what their needs are. That's what we want to fund. Our whole goal, mission is to bring tourism within the county in which way. So we want to find out who's coming from those perspectives. In my cabin, I have a log booth that I have in there. And we just say, remember this, so you, you know, if you want to put something in there, you put it in there. And it's amazing what these people find out. I mean, last week, for example, I, I had a person drive by and they were from Bedford, Indiana. And they were just coming down on Airbnb. They didn't even know about Perry County. I said, my God, we never even realized how beautiful this place is down here. So a lot of people don't know about us. I mean, that's just, we're a hidden secret here. I'm from New Boys County, everything, so don't hold that against me. But I absolutely love down here. And I voted on Ohio since I was 11 years old. So, and I finally moved down here 20 years ago, so I've been down there since then. But a lot of people in New Boys County don't know what's all down here as well. So hospitality, having that relationship is really, really critical. And, and learning and determining their needs is going to really help us out, I think, in the future. The fifth item that we're really targeting on too is a showroom booth. We really haven't had, we really haven't participated too much in... We really haven't had, we really haven't participated too much in shows like the boat shows, the boat show, Indianapolis Boat Show, different shows of that nature. So we were looking at possibly doing some kind of a booth background on that to have, but that's set up time. And we feel that there's going to be more local type stuff, maybe the Switzer Fest and things of that nature. If we go to the mobile boat show, so Eric has right now approved, matter of fact, he approved today, three pull-up, brand-new pull-ups. You know, that show in Perry County from what, what are the three?
The ones that map of the, like where the county has relations, Indy, Louisville and Evansville and whatnot, Southern Indiana. And then a lot of the cultural, like buildings, historical buildings, the Switzer Fest run and stuff like that. The other one's highlighting the river and the lakes, swimming, fishing, that sort of thing. And then another banner is hiking outdoor activities camp and whatnot, just collage of pictures and stuff. They're really cool.
Really cool and they're pull-up and they're relatively expensive. I like, they're about $250, $260 a piece. They're all color brochure photographs on there, pretty neat. And we can change those relatively easily if things do change. So that's, that's approved and that will be coming in this year. So anyway, to wrap it up here, if you look down, if you've got any questions, as you look down through there, we put in the website development, we got about 20,000 in there for that as well. And then we're funding many of the different things that we funded in the past. The Schnuell, Little Pioneer Village, Perry County Coon Club, Tell City Historical Society, Bristol Showroom, Car Show, Switzer Fest Run. We got some miscellaneous stuff in there, things come up as well. We do call out a few other things, the Sirmac Perry County Chamber of Membership, Indiana Bass Federation, Hoosier Open Tournament, which is a golf, a deal, Deer Creek Bass Trail and Indiana Tourism. So just a few other things that we do do. So, and there may be other things that pop up during the year that we can have some contingency funds that we can use for that. So our expenditures are about 204,000. We have about 173 that we're thinking is going to come in, revenue 12,000 in the industry. So we're a little bit short in that. So we're going to pull some out of our savings, which we have available, about 20,000. So that'll give us to, if we tie it all together, we should be to a positive of about a thousand dollars if you look at the whole budget, so.
Eric's going to be doing, trying to get his pilot's license for drones too. So y'all just be careful. Look up in the sky.
Don't shoot it.
And.
Why don't you take a second, just tell us a little bit about your background?
I think I'll call it here because it, for the video, it doesn't, you can't hear it out in the crowd.
I'm Eric Tredor, originally from DuBois County as well. I moved to Perry County about 12 years ago on a motorcycle ride, like, oh, yeah, out in the country and stuff. Went to buy a house for sale and ended up here, so. I really love it. I think with this position in particular, like I've just had a lot of jobs and not good at this, not good at that. But I like to travel. I like to explore. I like to hike. I like to kayak. I like to do all the stuff that this county offers us. And with that English background, with a photography background, it's kind of a good match so far. So I've got a lot of ideas, you know? I think there's untapped potential for the county as far as like, people don't know we're here, like we're the hilliest county in Indiana. You see all of these people and it probably is because of IU, but you know, road cycling up near Bloomington, Monroe County and stuff. You know, on a Sunday afternoon, our roads are empty, which, which I like very much. But I like to get some cyclists down here and stuff, you know, with the river. Talking to these cabin owners, a lot of them, a lot of these people, they just want to come here and relax and get away from it all. I think that's a big thing about Perry County. I haven't exactly pinned down the term, but you know, take a step back, get away from all that sort of thing. That you, you know, you get off the interstate on, like, on exit 79 and drive south on 37 and then take that turn into Derby. And you haven't driven by any fast food restaurants or haven't gone through any stoplights or anything like that. You've just seen forests and farmlands and whatnot. So, I mean, it's a beautiful place, so I want to share that with people, so. Yeah.
I think there's a big event in Derby tomorrow or something, right? There's something going on?
Yes.
I've been seeing it advertised. I think that's a good thing.
There have festivals, tables.
Vendors and music and stuff, so that's good. I noticed that there's, and not to just point out Derby in particular, I mean, in particular, because I know there's a lot of areas that do a lot of things and festivals and things. But I was driving through the county recently and I stopped in Derby because I need to use restroom and I want some ice cream. So I was driving the county roads, so it's getting a lot of things done. And I just, I noticed that there's just a lot of volunteers. It feels like there's, that community has a lot going on. They're always trying to look for the next thing. I know they have the kayaks now where you can rent those. They have, you know, the community centers going on. They have the new dock, what is it down there?
We got a new boat dock.
Yeah.
We're going to put in a new walking trail path.
The new walking trail. I mean, it's just great. And it's, and there's a lot of cabins there. And I know there's cabins in other areas too, but there, there's quite a few there in Derby, so.
It's a neat hub with a lot of potential. I've talked to the National Forest too about having like a possible off-road run, you know, going up through Hoosier National, coming back into town. That would be, you could have like food truck vendors and stuff like that and stay in a cabin and then go on this run and, you know, bring people in from outside the area, so, yeah.
The Hoosier National Forest, you know, there's, as you know, 60,000 plus acres here. We don't get any revenue from the forest. We get zero. However, it's a tremendous asset and a draw with all the campgrounds and the fishing and everything else that's going on there. So in the past year, year and a half, we, I've talked to Chris Tharden a number of times. We put some tours to the Hoosier National Forest. They have us just assigned in the last year or so, a new lia, more or less a liaison with the counties to work more closely with the counties. Her name's Cheryl Coons. We've met with her a number of times. She's been down here a number of different times. We're trying to work up some kind of a partnering relationship with it, maybe where we can participate in, or where we can count in the forest and things of that a little bit more. Anytime we bring people in, like in my cabin, the first thing they do is when they come in, they say, well, where's the restaurants at? And where's the grocery stores? You know, if they're staying there two or three days or a week, you know, the first thing they do, they're going to go out and shop, do some stuff. Next thing they're going to do is buy gas, you know, if they're boating, they're buying gas all the time, different things. So if we can bring them into the camp, we'll increase our revenues and it'll help everybody out.
I've mentioned this before in these meetings, and I'm the newest person on the board. And the first meeting that I went to was not the meeting that I expected it to be in Huntingburg, but Diego Morales spoke there, Secretary of State. And he introduced a digital advertisement, sort of a digital Yellow Pages that the Secretary of State was going to start for Indiana. Got brochures and the whole nine yards set for the whole thing. Thought it was rather interesting. They talked about not saying it's two miles from this or 10 miles from this, because people in Indianapolis, 10 miles is 30 minutes. Okay? Whereas, you know, attractions that are 10 minutes away in Perry County, that's 10 miles. Okay? But anyway, he, and I can't remember the name of the program.
Laser AI.
No.
Was it the WhatsApp?
WhatsApp.
Meeting you went to or something?
Yeah, I believe it was WhatsApp. I think that's what it's called. Get ahold of the Secretary of State's office, because what, what they were offering was every business in Perry County can sign up and have a listing for free. Okay? But you could develop a website for an additional fee. I can think that's what the programmers were interested in doing and that's, the state was, the Secretary of State was going to do this whole thing. But again, when you pop into like, when you pop into, say, Holiday World, then things in a 20-minute, I think geographical area pop up with all the attractions in the area. And again, you're looking for digital advertisement. It's something that would have a minimal cost except for those individuals who want to step it up and bring a more advanced website. Again, I turned that information over to Barry Stiles because at the time you guys were leaderless and Barry, I passed it on to Barry. I don't know if he passed it along to you or not. Are you familiar at all, is this?
No, I could look into it though. And if it was just the last year in Huntingburg, I'll still know they're like marketing person and stuff. So I could contact her and just look into it for sure.
And, yeah, because again, not knowing what I was doing, I attended this, thought it was, it sounded like a neat idea at minimal expense that the state of Indiana was trying to do to promote, to help individuals like our organizations such as yours. So I would love to see somebody have at least looked into it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Make my trip work.
Yeah. We could do that, we could do that.
All right, thank you.
So we're just asking to review the budget.
We have our budget sessions next week, so I would apologize for that, I was standing right. Where it will go through that process, so.
I was thinking, yeah, you guys will have to prove it, you just read it at the adoption. What is the CBV? You just have to, I don't think you guys. I think we do have to prove it.
You prove it at the adoption. Okay, at the adoption. So that's October.
In October.
In October. What date, like?
October 9th, I think.
We'll have her get you the date, but that'll be the date that we'll, we'll go through with our final approval, so. I think this is a lot more than we've gotten in the past, so I really appreciate it. It's a lot of detail. It's a lot of effort to come forward and go through it. I mean, and that's, that's kind of my expectation and so I appreciate that you did that, because that means a lot. I know your board's had some change and things and stuff.
It's really going great.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just, we're on cusp of just getting going, but it is.
We appreciate it, because I know it's a volunteer board, so. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you guys.
Thank you. Okay. Now. Based upon the information provided by the auditor, we're going to go over, make sure I say that. I did not come up with this myself. So, you're okay with that, aren't you?
Yes, I have worked with the Department of Local Government Finance and our consulting firm of Baker Tilly.
Okay. So we just have to read, this is where we will read the 2026 advertised levy. Is that correct? We'll just go through those four. So the first is County General for $4,136,720. The next is King Wonder Bridge for $474,977. The next is Health for $330,132. And the 2015 property reassessment for $137,132, for a total of $5,078,961. Do I need to? And we are projected to be over levy by $99,587.
So within those levy funds, that's how much we have to decrease?
Yes, we're only allowed to raise our budget 4% in our levies. Okay. So we don't have to, we just have to read it, correct? Okay. Now, the next thing that we have to read is this. It is our. Yeah? Okay. We're going to give a run-through of each one of the funds and the 2026 requested budget. And these are the categories or the fund descriptions. And then if you want specific departments or anything like that, our budget requests are all available. You can contact the auditor. It's all public information. Anybody who wants a copy of it, she can get you a copy. So just reach out to her or do her request. She'll, she'll let you know how to do that if anybody on YouTube land wants to do that. It's, it's pretty thick, so. And I'm just going to go down and so you're okay if I just read the fund descriptions. We're okay with that?
Just the fund, yeah, fund description.
Fund description and the request. Okay, so I'm going to go through these and if I mess them up, please tell me. So, in direct reading fund number? Okay, so fund description, the general, we have a 2020, for 2026, the request is $8,304,395.
You don't need to read these.
Okay. For Health, the request is $328,488. For King Bridge, the request is $486,900. For reassessment, the request is $103,330. For King Cap Development, the request is $242,817. For the Clerkswood Records perpetuation, the request is $15,091. For the Recorder's Record perpetuation, the request is $39,615. The next one, Sales Disclosure, for $4,410. Emergency Planning Right to Know, $3,767. And Enhanced Access, $15,921. Identification Security, $6,400. Local Road and Street for $420,000. Lit Public Safety for $683,439. Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted for $1,301,324. Motor Vehicle Highway Unrestricted for $240,248. Plat Book for $15,524. Riverboat for $39,400. Sex and Violin Offender for $1,400. Supplemental Public Defender for $5,500. Surveyor and Corners Perpetuation is $34,469. County-Elected Official Training for $6,000. Statewide 911 for $287,000. Lit PSAP is $363,509. Supplemental Adult Probation is $156,934. The Jury Fee is $3,000. Request, pre-trial diversion, request of $33,650. Surplus, surtax and wheel is a request of $225,000. And then we'll go down here to Economic Development for a request of 100, these are our edit funds. The edit, yep, for $180,000. And then we have jail, request is $271,661. Highway is $640,000. Special Projects is $324,630. Major Maintenance Projects, $125,000. And then Courthouse Security is $75,833. So that is set by the commissioners. Those are in the edit plan, so those are just fixed amounts that they have, so. Something else I have to read for that? Nope. Does anyone have any questions about this or?
So it's like allowing the public that we've got the preliminary budget and if they, it's available.
And if my math is correct, we have a lot to cut, like 2.6 million if we add everything up. So budget session is not going to be fun. I know we have a lot of requests, but we are, like I said, if this is correct, it's $2,693,378 to cut. So, that's not good. Yeah, the requests, the requests overall are a lot, pretty high. So, and our funds are limited, so that's just, it's not going to be fun. Does he might have anything else? Okay. If not. Yep, the next meeting. Where's it at? Okay, our budget sessions will be held at the Armory on September 16th, 17th and 18th. County Council Budget Work Sessions beginning at 8:00 AM each day. And then September 25th, we'll have our regularly monthly scheduled meeting here at the courthouse at 5:00 o'clock. So, somebody has anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made by Brad. Seconded by David. On favor, say aye. Aye. Any names? Okay, David wants to name it. He's outvoted, so. Okay, five to one. Motion passes. Thank you.